Okay, we'll call to order the meeting of the Monrovia Unified School District. And we will adjourn our Special Board of Education closed session and convene the regular Board of Education open session at 7:09. Mr. Wong, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Gladly, if you can all stand, please. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the God in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Everyone is here except for Mr. Buchanan, who was excused, and Dr. Terosian, who had a family emergency she had to attend to. We had a closed session prior to this meeting. The Board talked about collective bargaining and we took no action. There on item 2.5, there's a couple of changes this evening. We're pulling item 8.7. We're pulling item 9.1. And we're moving item 4.0, which is our consent calendar, to be for item 3.2. There's some people that we need to make some introductions to, to the community, and we'd like to do it while everybody's still in the room.
7.8?
I'm sorry?
7.8.
7.8? And pulling item 7.8. Okay. Are there any other changes to the order of business? Okay. If there's no further, we'll move on. Item 2.6, I entertain a motion of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Let me please have a vote.
Board Member Zuko?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Everstine.
Board President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Up next is recognizing communication. This evening, we're going to be recognizing a number of people. The USA Regional and State participants and the coaches. Ms. Anne Battle and Mr. Tom Rialli are here. Could you... Oh, Mr. Rialli is here, representing. And he is going to make some introductions to very fine individuals in our school district.
Okay.
Thank you.
Come on up, guys. So every year for the... forever, we've competed in a... with an organization called Skills USA. Mrs. Battle's done it forever. She can't be here tonight. And Mr. Montenegro has just joined us. But the purpose of the organization is to teach skills, teach vocational skills that students can go straight to work with. And what's being... starting to be understood by education is that we're falling short in doing that. And so what this organization does is it promotes that. And so I want to show you a sample of their work before we get too far, and then I'll introduce you to the people. Do I run this?
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to show you the gold medal... one of the gold medal photographs first.
Hey Darvin, is the projector on?
Yeah.
Darvin said, "What? You can't see it?"
Can we darken the room? No. Okay, technology failure. Anyway, it's really good. Say it again? It is on. They failed.
Screen is not on.
All right, never mind. Let me talk about each of the people and what they did, and then we'll get on with this, okay? I'm going to turn this way. These are not mine. Where are the Skills USA ones? That's one. Okay. The first person was a gold medalist in photography, one of Mrs. Battle's students. Her name is Simone Davenport, and she made it to the state finals this year. We didn't place, but we fought hard, so congratulations, Simone. Okay, Kevin Coran and John Maloney are two of my guys. There's only one of them here tonight, so you've got to get John his. They were gold medalists in the region and went to the state, and I was really hoping to show you their video tonight. The projector itself was not on?
Dr. Varan, you know how to work this?
Oh!
And now if we could show the video? This was done in 24 hours. Hope you can see it.
My name's Kevin Coran. I'm 18 years old. I have my whole life ahead of me, but I don't know where I'm going. So I decided to look for inspiration in others. To my generation, the greatest source of information isn't our elders, it's the internet. Articles, tutorials, blogs, vlogs, top 10 lists. And there's never a lack of celebrities and notable personalities who try to tell you how they got to where they are now. So me and many people like me feel profoundly disconnected because of that. So instead of trying to copy others, I decided to disconnect. So instead of looking into other people's lives, I decided to look back into mine. I realized that the only person who can take me where I want to go is me. I will not be satisfied with others' paths and definitions of success. Because I am my own captain. Success, it comes from me.
They don't have certificates, but I'll get them to them tomorrow. But they took a high enough position that we thought we were going to take two teams to San Diego, but the organization has gotten so big and it has gotten so competitive that fewer and fewer people get to go every year. I mean, the first 10 years I did this, every team that produced a video got to go to the state finals. Now it's very, very, very competitive, so proud of them all.
I want to take just a minute. When you have a rock star in your schools, you like to... who always shunned the limelight, I want to take a moment and shine some light on a rock star. I have known Tom... I've known Tom and had experience with him long before I ever got on the school board. And what he does and has been doing for kids ever since the day he landed in the Monrovia Unified School District is nothing short of phenomenal. This man, his capacity for caring and his heart is second to none. And we are the recipient of everything that you do. I have... I'm friends with the kids that he used to teach on Facebook, and you see where they've gone in their careers. His preaching of the pathway from high school to college to career, it's not a slogan, it's a way of life.
We've got one going to the Olympics this summer.
And we've got one going to the Olympics this summer. Tom breeds success. So the success that's within resides within him. And we are so grateful that you chose to work here and be with us. You, sir, are fantastic. Thank you. We have a great announcement. Is Elise Neill in?
Alizé.
Alizé? I'm sorry. Alizé? I am so sorry. Let me come around. You can just call me any old man you want. Dr. Terosian was going to be presenting this, but like I said, she had a family emergency and had to leave. And when we have one of our students as a shining star, we always like to introduce them to the community. And when you're a shining star in a wonderful organization like the Boys and Girls Club and you are their Person of the Year, we are so very, very fortunate and happy that you're one of ours. And so on behalf of the Monrovia Unified School District, we'd like to present you with a certificate and congratulate you on the Youth of the Year finalist. Congratulations.
She has to say something, ladies and gentlemen. She's worth that.
All right, so I was actually asked to give my speech that determined whether I was a finalist and to be Youth of the Year. I actually made it to the top six out of 27. So here goes. Imagine a deep feeling of sorrowful and impending doom. Can you imagine being locked in a cage with no light at all, when you feel as if it's the last breath you're taking and everything has already been consumed by darkness? Now imagine a world where this feeling is seen as invalid or mocked like a joke. A world that guilts you for your feelings of darkness, a world that shames mental health. For the first eight years of my life, my household was truly unpredictable. Sometimes all was well, other times I remember hiding with my siblings, hands to my ears, blocking out the screaming of my mother being abused by my father. My father was strange to me. I couldn't understand why he would instantly change into this person and not remember what had just happened. He would hide the voices he heard, as well as his diagnosis of paranoid schizophrenia. No one knew what he was going through because he was ashamed and scared. While all this was going on, no one knew my mother was suffering from depression. It wasn't until my father left that I discovered what he was forced to deal with. And it wasn't until my own diagnosis of mental illnesses that I discovered what my mother was going through. Growing up, hearing terms like clinical depression, mentally ill, and psycho all meant the same thing, that you were crazy. Society portrays mental health as this diseased mind and this judged stigma that makes people reluctant to get the help they need when it is required or essential. This is what I once sought too, until my mother found the Boys and Girls Club, a home where I can confide in people, admit my problems, and not feel insane or judged. The Boys and Girls Club built me up and slowly pushed me in the right direction, allowing me to get the help I needed and be the voice for others struggling like my parents and myself. It wasn't until a year and a half ago that I began to use my depression and anxiety with a purpose, rather than hiding it to prove those with mental illnesses aren't different or crazy. I use my family's background and my... sorry. I use my family's background of mental health to give me strength and empower others that might be ashamed of their problems because of what the world says or thinks. Thanks to the club, I have come from such darkness and found so much positivity and light. Through them, I have learned valuable skills like how to be a leader and communicating. From my development at the club, from adolescent to now a young adult, I know I am more than my illnesses. I know I can be the voice for youth affected by mental health and raise awareness as well. In just a few months, I will be graduating high school with a 3.2 GPA and heading to Grand Canyon University to study biology. Thanks to my friends, family, and club, I am ready for the next chapter in my life because I have the tools I need to succeed. I may still have some dark days now, but I can overcome them because I have the support I need. I have this space I play in, I named Bessie. Bessie's old, she's covered in scars, chips, and dings. She's like me in a way, damaged. But just because she's damaged doesn't mean she can't do great things. I am Alizé Neill, and I may suffer from depression and anxiety, but my mental health does not define me.
All I can say is wow. Fantastic. Mr. Williams?
Board President Hammond, I'd like to ask for a mother to stand, please. I know she's not the type to be in front of a camera, but I had the opportunity with Suzanne Hurst and Mayor Pro Tem Larry Spicer to witness this young lady receiving her award. Mayor Pro Tem Spicer can correct me, but I understand that Congresswoman Grace Napolitano is going to be bringing her to Washington DC to represent, based on her experiences. But you're an awesome individual. Thank you.
Up next, we have some great people that work for our district that are going to be introduced by their respective principals. Up first, from Mayflower, Dr. Cataroyan is here to introduce to our community some fantastic people that work at Mayflower.
So I am super excited to be up here. Anytime we get to love on our people and celebrate all the great things that we do, it's a really exciting time for all of us. So we have our background cheerleaders here, and I want to start with Ms. Martha Holmes, who is the Classified Employee of the Month, who was not able to make it today, but she thought she was going to get out of me reading what we had to say, and she is not going to. So we... just a little bit about Martha. She has been in the district for 13 years, all of which has been at Mayflower. She started off as a playground aide, and now she's a clerical office clerk in the main office, so we love having her. So I'm going to tell you the top 10 reasons why we love Martha Holmes. Number 10. Change has never been an obstacle for Martha, as she has always remained the backbone of our office and helped keep our ship sailing. Number nine. She is incredibly professional, reliable, and efficient in all that she does. Number eight. Her calm demeanor and presence puts everyone at ease, newbies, veterans, and principal alike. Number seven. She is the queen of lost and found. Her motto of "One man's trash is another man's treasures" is truly evident in our constantly growing pile. Number six. She's very flexible and just gets the job done, regardless of what fun role she has to fill at that given moment. And let me tell you, that changes all the time. Number five. Even though fashion styles continually change throughout the years, we can always count on Martha's trend-setting tight jeans. Number four. As much as she enjoys her Porto's cheese rolls, we are almost certain that those beautiful tight jeans have a secret stretch in them, even though she doesn't admit it. Number three. She has been voted as the best phone voice of the year since 1968. Number two. Martha's bilingual skills have really saved us in those "Ah, we need a translator!" And here comes Martha to save the day. And number one. She is an outstanding employee who is a role model for our students and staff. We truly love and appreciate having her, so. She's going to watch this tonight, definitely. All right, next up is Jan Dumber, who is our Certificated Teacher of the Month, who is standing right behind me, trying to hide in the pile right here. She... right there, there we go. She has been in the district for 25 years, of which 23 have been at Mayflower. We are super blessed to have her there. All right, you ready for your top 10?
Okay.
Okay, number 10. Even though she's incredibly young...
Thank you.
Yes. Her wisdom and valuable experiences are well beyond her years. Number nine. She is extremely, extremely caring and positive. Number eight. She can never say no regardless of what we ask. And I mean, regardless of what we ask, Jan cannot say no.
Of course, he's saying, "No, I don't."
Number seven. She never misses an opportunity to say thank you. We sometimes wonder where she stores that plethora of thank you cards, because I am telling you, even if we give her a cup of water, there's a thank you box in our note. And I... makes me look bad all the time. Number six. She is incredibly welcoming, and she walks around with like this invisible "Ask me, I can help you" sign. Number five. She makes it a point to check in, make contact, and connect with any person she comes across. People are extremely important for her, and relationships are extremely important for Jan. Number four. Her superwoman powers were exposed when kryptonite suddenly hit and wires just magnified to her feet when she went face forward, flat on the floor in her classrooms. That's when we knew the superwoman cape was there, but she really was human. Number three. Her calmness is the anchor to our mariner ship. Number two... sorry. Siri, what is the square root of pi times 181?
23.8.
Clearly, we have no use for Siri anymore because we have mathematician next to us. And number one. Last but not least, but more importantly, her everyday, just who she is, who she encompasses, what she does, she truly lives our motto of "Celebrate 365" in everything that she does. She's amazing. We love her, and she's a role model to so many on our campus, and I can't tell you
Up next, we have Dr. Sweeney, who is going to make the introduction of some fantastic
the number of times I have gone to her for advice.
folks from Santa Fe.
And just what she has told me and how she has helped me has just been a blessing for
I apologize right now.
us. So thank you so much. You can just see how incredibly popular she is.
I am not David Letterman.
I'm sure we could have filled the whole entire room, so thank you so much.
I do not have a top 10 list.
Thank you.
I'm a little more like Oprah, but...
You're funny. I love it. I love fun.
so take out your tissue. We're about to do our Santa Fe people. Thank you, Board, for recognizing Santa Fe and our members. I'm also going to start with my Classified Member of the Year, Ms. Leanna Basara. Will you please join me up here? Leanna Basara is a fairly new addition to Santa Fe, yet her presence has been strongly felt and appreciated. Leanna is one of the first faces that Santa Fe sees and is an integral part of our community. She's the individual that people call to report their child out sick and the person that locates our students on campus. She handles lost backpacks and lunches that are dropped off. Leanna translates information to our Spanish-speaking families and consoles students that receives cuts and scrapes. Leanna's been in the district since 2012 and at Santa Fe since 2014, but the way in which she fits seems so much longer. Thank you, Leanna, for all that you do for our Cougars. And Leanna has brought her mom and her son and her in-laws to cheer her on. Ms. Donna Monahia is our Certificated Teacher of the Year. Take as long as you walk as you like. Donna Monahia has so many things to Santa Fe Middle School. She's a science teacher. Donna's been teaching at Santa Fe Middle School since 2007. The lessons that she delivers for her students daily engage them, make them think critically, push them past their limits, yet support them in their struggles. She's a focus leader, guiding the entire school through choosing an instructional focus and implementing it on a daily school-wide level. She's the Science Department Chair. She guides her department through their work with the next-generation science standards and their specific integration and focus. She's a PBIS Committee member, helping Santa Fe look at how to improve student discipline through behavior expectations and commitments. She's now the Social Committee, celebrating school cohesiveness through activities that involve the entire staff. And finally, she's a friend. Her colleagues know that she has a heart of gold and will share it anytime when asked. Thank you, Donna, for your work at Santa Fe. We wouldn't be complete without you. Donna is also joined by her husband and her daughter and her son and her mother.
Leanna is one of the first faces that Santa Fe sees and is an integral part of our community. She's the individual that people call to report their child out sick and the person that locates our students on campus. She handles lost backpacks and lunches that are dropped off. Leanna translates information to our Spanish-speaking families and consoles students that receives cuts and scrapes. Leanna's been in the district since 2012 and at Santa Fe since 2014, but the way in which she fits seems so much longer. Thank you, Leanna, for all that you do for our Cougars. And Leanna has brought her mom and her son and her in-laws to cheer her on. Ms. Donna Monhe is our certified teacher of the year. Take as long as you walk as you'd like. Donna Monhe has so many things to Santa Fe Middle School. There's the obvious, she's a science teacher. Donna's been teaching at Santa Fe Middle School since 2007. The lessons that she delivers for her students daily engage them, make them think critically, push them past their limits, yet support them in their struggles. She's a focus leader, guiding the entire school through choosing an instructional focus and implementing it on a daily school-wide level. She's the Science Department Chair. She guides her department through their work with the next-generation science standards and their specific integration and focus. She's a PBIS Committee Member, helping Santa Fe look at how to improve student discipline through behavior expectations and commitments. She's now the Social Committee, celebrating school cohesiveness through activities that involve the entire staff. And finally, she's a friend. Her colleagues know that she has a heart of gold and will share it anytime when asked. Thank you, Donna, for your work at Santa Fe. We wouldn't be complete without you. Donna is also joined by her husband and her daughter and her son and her mother.
I'd like to thank the folks at the Chamber of Commerce for always making sure that we're able to do this once a month, and I'd like to thank Judy Scheffler from Foothill Credit Union. Judy, will you just stand up and be recognized, please? Foothill Credit Union's contributions in time, money, and support to our district is second to none in the corporate partnership that we have. Thank you so much, Judy. We have Board Member Reports and Ms. Zuko.
Wait, wait.
Did I miss something?
We moved to 4.0.
Yeah, I surely did. I mean, let me just move it up. Thank you so much.
Before I started talking. No, just kidding. Never mind. So moved on the 4.0.
Too slow.
We are moving the consent calendar up, so I'll entertain a motion on consent.
So moved.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Maybe please have a roll call vote, please.
Board Member Wong.
Yes.
Board Member Zuko.
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland.
Yes.
Board Member Williams.
Yes.
Board President Hammond.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
And then, what I'd like to do is have Mr. Jackson. Since we just took a vote, we've established that there's people that work for our district in that consent calendar, and in the folks that work for the district, there's two new people that we'd like to introduce you guys to.
Thank you, Board President Hammond. I'm going to start this evening with Dr. Lily Torres, so if you'll join me here at the podium while I acknowledge your acceptance. She's not shy of the microphone, I'll tell you that. On behalf of the Monrovia Unified School District, I'd like to introduce our newest principal commencing in the 2016-17 school year at Monroe Elementary School. Monroe, I know you're here tonight. Currently, Dr. Torres serves as an elementary principal at Longfellow Elementary in the Whittier City School District. She has served as a middle school assistant principal, she's been a literacy coach at the middle school, she possesses a breadth and depth of knowledge in curriculum instruction and in leadership. She has taught grades, first grade, second grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, eighth grade, what grade haven't you taught? And she is also bilingual, so clearly Lily comes to us with a wealth of experiences. She is complimented with an excellent pedigree in education. She completed her bachelor's at USC, fight on, her master's at Pepperdine, and her doctorate at Claremont Graduate University. Her peers indicate she's knowledgeable, she's approachable, and she's an excellent communicator, and Monrovia Unified is fortunate to have her joining our family. So with that said, please join me in welcoming Dr. Lily Torres for just a few words.
Thank you for the lovely introduction, Dr. Jackson. Good evening, Board of Education and District Office Administrators. I am delighted and thrilled and just so excited to have this opportunity to join the Monrovia Unified School District Team of Administrators. I've heard nothing but the best about Monrovia, and I am just excited to take on the joys and experience the challenges of leading a school in the 21st century. Personally, I am just very, very honored to be offered this opportunity because I used to be a resident of Monrovia, and this community is near and dear to my heart. I lived right on Walnut Street, and it's just a wonderful area, and I love, love, love Monrovia. I just want to say that I look forward to meeting my future students and their families, the staff, the teachers, and just leading the school over the next school year, and I'm just excited to be here. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Did she bring anybody with her? Dr. Torres?
Yes.
Since, well, I'll do this. Thank you so very much for choosing us as well. We do know that you spend a considerable amount of time here, and without the support of the people at home, we could all do our jobs. If you'd like to introduce the folks that you brought with tonight, it'd be wonderful.
Thank you. So my daughters Sophie and my fiance Eric are here. Thank you so much. Eric has a very busy job and he took time to be here tonight, and thank you very much, Sophie and Eric. And Sophie, she said, "Mommy, when you're at the podium, will you say, 'That's my daughter, Sophie, here's your chance, Sophie, that's my daughter, Sophie.'" Thank you, thank you very much for that.
Nice to meet you, Sophie.
Our second newest member to the Monrovia Unified School District family, Coach Jerry Chow, if you'll join me here at the podium. Coach Jerry Chow will be joining the Monrovia High School Wildcat Family as a physical education teacher and as well as our new head football coach. So let me tell you just a little bit about Coach Jerry Chow. He studied at Rutgers University and he completed his teaching credentials at National University. He currently teaches at Montebello High School and has served there since 2010, but he has served as an educator since 1992, so he's well seasoned. He served as, and he has served as a coach since 1985, so he comes to Monrovia with a wealth of experiences in that area as well. As a head coach of Eagle Rock High School, he led his teams to the 2004, 2005, 2006, and 2007 Northern League Championship. In 2005 and 2006, his teams were honored as they earned Los Angeles City Section Champions. Significant accomplishment that, huh? He's most recently served as an assistant coach at Montebello High School where his winning ways have continued with his tutelage and his assistance. These teams earned championships in 2013, 2014, and 2015, so winning follows this individual. According to his peers, Coach Chow is a role model. He's a mentor, a teacher, and a coach, and that's what our students at Monrovia Unify and Monrovia High School deserve, and we are so excited and blessed to have him joining the Wildcat family. And so with that said, Coach Jerry Chow.
Thank you, Board, District Office, everybody that's here, thanks for coming out and supporting. Again, I'm excited and I'm challenged because I know Monrovia has a huge tradition in sports and especially football. You've guys been to the championship more than any other school in this area, I'm gonna say 12, correct me if I'm wrong, I've been doing a little research, and it's a huge tradition, and I want to uphold this tradition, and I just think that this is a great place. I'm watching all the different things that are going around here, and I talked to Mr. McGinnis, it's a small community, but it has big city goals, I think, so this is a great place for me. Maybe my final chapter, I don't know, but I'm hoping it is, I can write my final chapter here with a great program and great support from the Board and the District Office and Mr. McGinnis. So, thank you again. I'm hoping to see you guys very often.
Coach Chow, I welcome you. Thank you for choosing us as well. If there's anything that we can ever do for you to make your time better here, please do not hesitate to ask. I'd like to recognize Mayor Pro Tem Larry Spicer, who is here in the audience. Larry, thank you for coming. And up next, we have Board Reports. You ready, Alex?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so first, the last board meeting, I didn't mention there was a California School Board Association Lobby Day in Sacramento, so I joined about 500 board members from across California and descended upon the Capitol in Sacramento and spoke to them about a couple of things, one being there is a, Senator Glazer has a charter school bill that would take all of the influence and capability to reject or approve charter schools out of the local and give it to the state, which we are opposed to, apparently. And then also SB 799 coming back from also Glazer, so he was on the good list and the bad list to repeal the reserve cap, which they're still trying to work through. And then second, I got a call today from a gentleman named Mud Baron, and maybe I'll direct him to Mr. McGinnis, his name is Mud, and he is from John Muir High School, and he runs the Muir Ranch, and they are looking to expand their program. And I, and since I'm a traditional hippie with a great victory guard, and I was like, "Yeah," but I can't, I didn't want to, he knows, then he saw I was leaving, so they was like, "Maybe I shouldn't talk to you, you're not a very good resource." So I will direct him to Kirk, but it's a great program, and they have a CSA, which is a community support organization where they actually provide and sell fruit and vegetables to the community and flowers and have lovely dinners, but it's the best thing Muir's done in a really long time, and it involves dirt and mud, so it's great. So that was my whole report.
Thank you, Alex. Mr. Williams.
For those who don't think we're gonna miss Alex Zuko, you got another thing coming. I don't want to go there yet, but at any hand...
I'm counting on you, Terrence, do not cry, because if you start to cry, then that's like it.
It's Bill Mink crying, I'm telling you. I've been known to do such. But I just want to remind all regarding the Monrovia Day, scheduled for May 14th. This is in conjunction with Center Stage, Monrovia Unified School District, and the City of Monrovia. The City of Monrovia and the Monrovia Unified School District will be sponsoring the parade, and it's going to be showcasing our students and their talents, and from a personal note, showcasing Monrovia as a gem city of the foothill of a school district. I am one that believes in marketing, and we should market what we do well, which is our school district. Also, in addition, I just wanted to remind all that we do have a wonderful school district. And there have been comments with regards to favoring the parade, and there have been comments of some who have, shall I say, have not been put on board yet, but I will say this personally, that I'm excited as a member of the Monrovia School District Board to be presenting such a tool to our school, our residents rather, as well as the surrounding schools. We have had a history of transitioning students in and out, and I am one that will say this candidly, I don't want to let any kid go. And I'm doing my best to recruit every child from K to 12 to cement their steps in our school district. So with that said, I am excited, and I hope you are, and I pray that you will come out on the 14th of May at 9:00 AM to start this shame dig, and it's gonna be all-day entertainment, showcasing our kids what we present as a school district to the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I just had one comment. Last week, the high school has activities going on all the time, but last week they had the Battle of the Bands, and if you ever want to have a fantastic night out and see some local talent, it is the best $5 you'll ever spend, and it's just a great evening. And last week did not disappoint, so it'll come again next year, and when you see all the announcements on Facebook and all the, on campus about the activity, just go see the Battle of the Bands. It is a fun time, enjoyed it thoroughly. Mr. McGinnis and all the folks who put that on, just a great time. A lot of parent involvement, you know, and I thought to myself, it's like, "Well, heck, I'm not that old because it doesn't seem that loud." Up next, our student representative Heather is here to tell us about some fantastic things going on her campus.
Okay, so Canyon Oaks and Mountain Park are thrilled to have our juniors enrolled in the S-Back Prep Course as we gear up for state testing next month. On another note, it is with a heavy heart that I have to report that our campus has been devastated by the sudden loss of one of our beloved Canyon Oaks students, Erica Mayfield. We are now trying to cope as a team during the healing process. So, that is...
Thank you. Our thoughts and prayers are with all you guys. Now playing the part of Dr. Therosian is going to be me, and because I get to introduce to you another one of our shining stars, a lady who truly needs no introduction, but I'm going to because what she has done is worth the introduction, it's a momentous occasion. Whenever one of the folks in our district does something that is incredible, we like to highlight it. I'm going to introduce to you Dr. Jennifer Bryant, who is going to give us a snapshot of her dissertation as it relates to what she is now an expert in her field in, and I, you know, looking at the, it's a practices, it's an exploration of practices that either facilitate or inhibit leadership training strategies. This is a lady who for years has been a coach, a mentor, and if there's ever a square peg that fits into a square slot, it has to be Jennifer, Dr. Jennifer Bryant getting her P.A., or getting her ED in this study. Fantastic. Congratulations to you.
That is so nice. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. That was a very nice introduction, and I'm so thrilled to be here to serve in presenting my research, and I wanted to thank Dr. Therosian, but she's not here, but just a thrill to be able to briefly give you some information about my study. So my research revolved around promising practices in building leadership capacity in teachers with the intent of moving them into school leadership and the principalship in schools. So one of the things that we've found is that there is a shortage of high-quality principal candidates, and this is caused by many reasons, retiring baby boomers, population shifts such as, you know, the ones we've seen along the 210 corridor here, just the complexity and growing challenges of leading schools in this new century. And so this has led us to realize that we need to identify, recruit, and sustain principals for schools. And my study in particular looked at how we're doing that beginning with teachers and how principals, current principals of schools, are building capacity in teachers in trying to grow their leadership skills so that they can eventually move into the principalship. The purpose of my study was to, first of all, look at the literature examining leadership succession for principals, and look at some of the promising practices that we see out there in schools as principals currently recruit and build capacity in teachers for school administration. I wanted to explore the teachers' expectations, perceptions of these practices, the teachers that have been what we call tapped, which means selected and are being groomed for school administration, and then also identify some of the factors that help and hinder the strategies that are building capacity in these teachers. I created this conceptual framework to guide my study, just looking at the historical impact of teachers and what has gone on in districts and schools, looking at principal succession planning through the lens of something called transformational leadership, and accounting for challenges as well as the things that are working as successes, and what those practices are that then move people into becoming part of what we call a reservoir of high-quality administrators prepared to move into schools and lead schools effectively for students. My study was actually... effectively for students. My study was actually a qualitative study, so I relied on interviews, observations, analysis of documents. And so I went to a site, studied one principal in particular, who is very successful at building capacity in teachers and moving them into school administration, and studied his work and interviewed him, as well as his current teachers he is working with, and his former teachers who have moved into administration. As I said, he was a principal, and he's located in the Los Angeles area, northeastern LA County, and has been there for 12 years. Very strong reputation for building capacity in teachers with the intent of moving them into school administration. And I considered him a successful principal, because his school, over these 12 years under his leadership, has shown growth, not only in test scores, but in programs and other factors that contribute to successful schools. So this is one of the first questions that I answered. And in what ways do principals build and develop the next generation of school leaders? And there are four themes that really emerged in my study. First of all, principals have a very strong personal ideology, that their purpose as leaders is to build the next generation of leaders. It is their calling almost, to build up and develop school principals. And that's part of what their job is as a school principal. They create a culture in which people are striving to meet high lofty goals and to better themselves. And in the case of the teachers, you know, move into administration. They build really strong, positive relationships. And these positive, supportive relationships allow for the mentoring and the coaching and the feedback that is needed to develop teachers in their leadership skills. And finally, one of the most important factors is that there is a formalized system for teachers to learn about administrative duties, and that these are authentic duties. They're not just informal, hey, you'd make a great principal someday. But really, here's a task, and I want you to work the whole year on this. And I also want to sub you out of your classroom for 10 days this year to work not only side by side with me, and authentic administrative work, but also, when you're ready, cover for, you know, me, as a principal, when I'm out. And so those are kind of the authentic tasks that the teachers who have been tapped by this principal were taking part in. The teachers that were tapped found great value in the relationships that they built with the principal, and found that that allowed them to really honestly grow and develop as school leaders. They valued the authentic practice. Many had moved into administrative credential programs and said that, we do a lot of role-playing, but that's not the real work of what it takes to be a principal of a school, and how complex and challenging it is. So they saw so much value in that, that experience of real practice at their school site with their principal. And then the mentoring and feedback helped guide them. It wasn't just, again, subbing, but they were side by side with their principal, getting feedback on how well they facilitated a meeting or dealt with a parent issue. So. There are factors that hinder and help in building capacity in teachers. Some of the inhibitors are psychological for teachers. They often play this dual role, because there's still classroom teachers full-time and taking on these extra duties. And their peers will sometimes joke, or even with some seriousness, say things like, oh, you're going to the dark side. Or are you a teacher today or an administrator today? And so that puts pressure on them. There's time constraints of doing both of those roles, the teacher role and the, you know, role as a pseudo-administrator. And there's time constraints on the principals, to take time to mentor and work with these teachers. And those are difficult challenges for both groups. And there's a lack, in many cases, of structural support. For example, financial support. If you're gonna sub teachers out, and the district isn't financially supporting your capacity building and the succession planning, then those are decisions about your site funds as a principal that you have to make. And in my case, my principal valued what he did so much that he specifically chose to finance those subs out of his school budget. So what are the facilitating factors? Formalized, structured process, where we're not just telling teachers about what it's like to be administrators, but giving them experiences to do that, and that it's part of the culture at the school, where everyone knows that these teachers are being tapped for leadership. Authentic practice, doing the real work. And then a commitment of site funds and time on the part of both the teachers and the principal. So based on my study, I found three groups that could kind of take these findings and apply them. Principals should see tapping teachers and developing the future principals as part of their role as school leaders, and create a formal plan for it, and not just rely on informal opportunities to develop teachers' leadership capacity. Districts can incorporate the site practices of building teachers in their leadership skills into their district succession plans, and support the tapping of teachers at the site level, whether it be financially or in other ways. And education organizations, such as universities, that provide training and administrative credential programs, can collaborate with districts and with schools to make leadership succession really begin at the teacher level, provide research-based ideas for how best to develop leadership in teachers. And then as these teachers enter credential programs for their administrative credential, work and partner with the districts and with the principals to allow that authentic practice at the site to carry over and mesh with the credentialing coursework and research that these teachers are learning as they obtain their administrative credential. So this is a very small, brief summary of my study and some of the things that I found. And again, I appreciate so much being able to share it with you. I'm excited to have finished, obviously. If you're interested in all 150 pages, some good bedtime reading, I'm happy to share that with you or answer questions at another time. But I thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for allowing me to share and to celebrate this personal and professional accomplishment.
Well, we're all very, very proud of you, and congratulate you. It was a huge step. And like I said, when I saw the course of study, I thought, right, this is perfect. This is, you've been doing this your whole career. Congratulations to you. Fantastic.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
A quick update on MHS reconstruction is, Vince is here to give us a brief update on the progress. The man with the remote is in control.
He is, he is. He has the power. So thank you, everyone. Once again, we'll talk real quickly about the high school. This is where we're at today. The interior drywall is starting to go up in the attendance office, as well as the counseling office. They've actually taped and expect to put primer on the wall this week. This is just a picture of the insulation that's behind those walls. This is the area that has to be plastered on the interior corridor wall, as well as the exterior wall has plaster on it. This is the plaster actually going on the wall. It's one heck of a process. Haven't seen that in many, many years. We did able to get Kirk's office back open. He'll be moving in in the next few days, as well as, this is pictures of the reception area and his office there. And we have the classrooms right above that office, and they're outside the auditorium. Those four classrooms up there are back in operation. This one here on the left is the computer lab that they have been using this week for testing. It actually has the computers in there now, thanks to Jason's group. All the computers are back online. So. I have one other thing I left to back there.
Sure.
I just want everyone to see the colors that are being put back in there. The top one is the Swiss coffee for the walls. The middle one you see is cloud, which would be the doors and door jams, and then the accent color.
Oh.
So just like everybody... For everyone, this is the colors that were there. It's the existing colors that are there. We just want to share with everybody what's happened.
At my house, I don't choose color. That's my wife's job, because...
Me too.
It doesn't work out well.
Me too. So, but maybe just pass it all the way around to Alex, and we'll be good.
That's not sexist at all. Please hand me the, I'm colorblind. That's fine.
Oh, Alex, it's blue and it's gold.
My mother picked out the colors in my house, because I don't, I don't do this stuff of colors.
That's where we're at with the high school. Questions?
We are still online to have everything working by next school year.
We are still on schedule to complete July 17th.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you. Up next, item 3.5 is public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Simply fill out a card, and you shall be heard. Do we have any speaker cards?
We have three requests to speak. The first is from Joni Golar-Yul. She was speaking about, she wished to speak about Black History Month 2016 on behalf of the Monrovia Doherty Black Alumni Association.
I just want to know who selected the podium. I'm used, I'm gonna put it right here. No. Walk into my tippy toes. There. First of all, President Hammond, school board members, Monrovia School District staff, I'm just elated to be here. We are at a point where we thought we were, had a meeting, and we started wrapping up the success of our Black History Month 2016. And as we did this, and reflected, it came upon us what a wonderful position we, as the Monrovia Doherty Black Alumni Association are in, in our collaboration with the Monrovia Unified School District. These two bodies coming together so that we could provide additional educational opportunities for all the students in Monrovia. Opportunities that we collectively hope will shield them from a society that might tell them contrary, that all human beings can and do and will live together in harmony. And as we reflected upon these things, we thought we would be remiss if we did not think about what a blessing it is to have you, the school board, and our superintendent, under her leadership, to allow this collaboration to happen. So although she's not here, the Monrovia Doherty Black Alumni Association has for her and her office, a plaque in gratitude and appreciation of us working together with our board members of the Monrovia Doherty Black Alumni Association, in appreciation for your work in Black, for Black History Week, Month 2016. It is under her, and I'm gonna give that to, it was under her capable leadership, that in her wisdom, she shared these things with the staff to get them also behind the efforts. And as a result of that, this year, 100% of the students had an experience that we were able to provide. This year, also, something we thought we just could not, not let you know how important it was for our association. And there was, under the leadership, we had, as you all know, our high school that kind of in the middle of things, wasn't able for, we weren't able to use. It was already planned and taken care of. We had feathers in our hat celebrating that we were advanced, and then we had no location. For, we had a principal step up to the plate in the last minute. Not only do that, this particular principal came early in the morning to make sure her school was set up. And then she started helping set up. And she was the very last one to leave there and help take down. She was the one who had the most staff who was attended at this particular event. She had the most parents in attendance at the event. She supported, and not just this year, every year we've had it, our Arts Festival, she's been there, and carrying the banner for her school and celebrating the successes of all the students there. So we found out, to our dismay, that she was leaving. And so we thought, this was the meeting. We better call her up. This is our opportunity to publicly thank her for not only her years of service to Monrovia, but her years of collaboration with the Monrovia Doherty Black Alumni Association. So Cindy, come on up. You talk about Wonder Woman. There she is, coming up here right now.
It was an honor. It wasn't a job. It was an honor.
I want to take just a second to thank you for the opportunity of allowing us to make this presentation at your meeting. There's not enough words to say what this collaboration has meant, not only to our association, but the effect it has on the students in Monrovia. No place else, I believe, you can't make me believe anything different. No place else do children have an opportunity to go to school, learn about and appreciate unity in diversity, experience it every day with the kids they go to school with. And when they leave Monrovia, you can't tell them anything. You can't stereotype people. You can't put prejudice into them, because they've witnessed humanity in Monrovia. And you guys are allowing that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next request to speak is from Susan Hirsch, who would like to speak, provide a Community Services Commission report.
Good evening, Board President Hammond, board members, members of cabinet, and our community audience. It's my pleasure to greet you again this evening with a report from the Community Services Commission. Two items that I'd like to speak to are events that just took place. Last weekend, we had our first parent academy, put on by the Healing Connections Task Force, which, as you know, is a Golden Bell winner for our school district and is a community-wide partnership. And we were thrilled to be able to have, as our keynote speaker, Alyse Neal, who really brought down the house with her story, as it does every time she conveys it. The subject was on mental health and wellness, and it was well-attended, and is really a great start to what we hope to have in place, starting in the fall, our monthly academies, once a month, on targeted subjects. The other thing that I'd like to report on is last night at our city council chambers, at the chamber, we graduated 15 of our middle school and high school students from the MAP Leadership Academy. That's the Monrovia Area Partnership. And for the last four years, we have had a youth leadership academy. So we are up to over 90 students from our school district, both middle and high school, that have been through that academy and are graduates. The next piece that I would like to bring to you is also from the community, the upcoming Derby Day, that is a Boys and Girls Club event for the love of youth, will take place on Saturday, May 7th, at Santa Anita Racetrack. That is the day of the Kentucky Derby. So we hope that everyone will come out and help us celebrate the love of youth for the Boys and Girls Club at Santa Anita. This Saturday, Saturday, April 23rd, is our 7th Annual MAP Adult Neighborhood Conference. That's from 9:30 to 3 o'clock at the Community Center, with lots of workshops, and we invite everyone to come and join us for that event. So I hope to see many of you there. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we have one more request to speak from Dave Hart, who would like to speak about Alex Zuko.
Oh, come on, Dave. Be nice.
Get your tissue, Dave.
Well, first I gotta say, I didn't realize that she's on the agenda, so I'm actually supposed to be 3.51.
You're all right.
But since I'm here, I would be remiss if I didn't compliment Board President and Mr. Williams on their coordination of tie. Wonderful look, quite a wonderful look.
I learned from you.
And most of that comes from me. I would also take a moment to invite all of you, you want to talk about another showcase. Monday, our band, Advanced and Beginning Orchestral Strings, are having their spring concert, will probably have some drama, at 7:00 PM down at Santa Fe Middle School. So if you can, it's a wonderful event, and these kids are fantastic, under the direction of Tony Ellis, and we just really encourage you to be there. Jumping into 3.51, Alex, as a resident and a teacher, I'd just like to thank you for your time on the board. We've calculated the years, I think it's five to one, so you've been with the district in your capacity for about 35 to 40 years, with the time and effort and energy you put in on championing students and advancement. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board on any item that is not on the agenda? Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close that portion, we'll take up 3.5.1 for public comment that items that are on the agenda. Do we simply fill out a speaker card and you shall be heard? Do we have any speaker cards? Anyone wishing to speak to the board on any item that is on the agenda? Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close that portion, and we'll now take up the matter of 6.2 and Dr. Kaiser.
6.1.
I'm sorry, 6.1.
6.1. 6.1, this is one of the most exciting board agenda items in the entire year each year. In order to receive a high school at graduation diploma, eligible students must be officially approved by the Board of Education. The list of students presented includes all graduates who would be eligible at time of graduation. Final certification of eligibility is contingent upon successful completion of all required work currently in progress, and it's our request tonight that the Board of Education approve this list.
On the agenda, it does not appear to be an action item, but obviously it is an action item. I'll entertain a motion.
Vote.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion, Brian, any names removed from the list prior to the vote?
I'm looking hard to make sure one is on there.
Make sure Chris gets a copy of this list.
For the folks who don't know, Mr. Wong has a young man in his household who is going to be graduating, perhaps if his dad puts his name on the list. We have any more discussion?
I do want to say that I do appreciate that we no longer have this on the consent agenda, and we pull it out to talk about and celebrate the, our kids do a really great job, and they shouldn't be part of the consent, it should be kind of something else.
I agree.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Big deal. May we please have a vote?
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Zuko?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Up next, we have 6.2 and Dr. Kaiser.
Yes, we are presenting to you tonight, Board, the agreement between Monrovia Community Adult School and the Educational Testing Service, ETS, to administer the HSET, ETS High School Equivalency Test.
Any questions? Intertain a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? May we please have a vote?
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Zuko?
Yes.
Board President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Up next is item 6.3, Dr. Kaiser.
Yes, it's our pleasure tonight to introduce to you, Board, our Village Program. This Village Program is the extended day program in Monrovia Unified School District, and it is a Golden Bell Award-winning program. And to present this program to you tonight, we have...
Tom McFadden.
Tom McFadden.
He's in, what are you, talk about a good tie, look at this tie.
I was trying to keep up with everybody, so. I echo the same sentiments that everyone else is, I'm grateful to be here, I'm excited to be leading the extended school program. It was in my classroom when I was at Clifton, and I always enjoyed the students in the class and in the program. So I'm gonna do a brief overview of what's going on, what goes on with these kids between 6:30 in the morning to 6:00 at night. So hopefully we'll be able to answer that question as we go through this brief overview. Currently, we serve over 600 students in three different programs, before school, after school, and our summer program. In looking at the MUSD LCAP goals, we have a focus on academic assistance and enrichment, which in the LCAP looks at student achievement and student engagement. So the grant addresses those two specifically. We serve also the high needs group as targeted by LCAP. We have over 80 students identified as ELs, 300 students identified as low-income. We also have foster youth in the program. And one of the great things about being in Monrovia is the diversity that it presents. So as you would imagine, we have students from all, all the groups. And like we said, we were a Golden Bell Award winner back in 1999. One of the things that's new for this year is an accountability piece, that the state of California has levied on all ACES programs. ACES is the grant that we run under, the After School Enrichment and Safety Program. So there's 12 quality standards that they've identified. ACES programs need to focus on one or two of these each year, but address all 12 of them through the continuous cycle of quality improvement, which is the little graphic over to the right. We started this process last, at this time last year, with our stakeholders, parents, students, and staff, identifying which of the 12 standards that they would like to see worked on or focused on for this school year. So for this school year, safe and supportive environment, quality staff were the two standards that were selected to be the focus, although we're not ignoring the other 10. We're just gonna focus on these two in particular. So we've done lots of things, both on the safe and supportive side and the quality staff side. We've done things for professional development on PBIS, social-emotional learning, youth development. We have a positive recognition behavior program at all the sites that we serve. Village staff should be easily identifiable. If you see someone in orange leading groups of kids out there after school, it's probably not Caltrans, it's somebody with Village, leading students through their activities. We've increased communications at the sites. We participated in a variety of health and safety trainings this year. All of our staff are CPR and first aid-trained. We have mental health initiative training that I led with them. And we follow the MUSD policy and procedures for emergencies. So again, we're addressing this as a work in progress. To increase our quality of staff, we increased our professional development opportunities throughout the year for both our activity leaders and our site managers. These increased resources should increase the staff's ability to implement high-quality programming, which is what's keeping the kids engaged and involved in our after-school programs, which is gonna lead to greater academic success and engagement for their students and their parents. We've also added rigor to the recruitment and hiring process, as well as the evaluation and assessment tools for Village staff. So again, those all point to increased quality staff. Here's some pictures of our Lights On After School activity with our Arts Attack Engagement Program that was just started up this spring. We've had lots of help this year, fortunately, from community partners such as the Monrovia Reads Foundation, Monrovia Schools Foundation, helping out with our engagement pieces. We serve at six school sites, before and after-school programs, and we do a variety of things to keep the kids involved after school. We have a science action club that's going right now, both over at Santa Fe and Clifton, where they're dealing with bugs and clouds in environmental science. We have character counts, education lessons, the Arts Attack that I mentioned. Our STEM soccer program's gonna start tomorrow over at Santa Fe. And next week, we have the Noise Within Drama Program that's culminating in a bridge version of Romeo and Juliet. So we're excited about that, they'll have stage swords with them. So anytime you put swords in the hands of a middle school kid, it's very, it's interesting. And then we do a lot of work with getting the parents engaged with their students in the program and with the schools. We have a Lights On After School event that we put on every October, where the students and the, from the middle schools host elementary school students in a variety of events. We have a Battle of the Books that we did for the first time this year, that was great to see those kids reading for a purpose and winning medals. We have walking field trips, basketball tournaments, student leadership, we have clubs. I mean, there's just a lot going on for our students after school. We address academics, so there's two big umbrella pieces to the grant, one is academic assistance. We address that in a variety of ways, and it's, the work is continuing. There's ways that we can get better, and we're working with Dr. Kaiser in helping our staff become more quality in that area. But we do provide daily homework assistance. We have a small group tutoring program that goes on both at the elementary sites and the middle school sites, and our tutors are hired through the Project Pass tutors from the high school. Our middle school staff are very familiar with School Loop, so the kids cannot tell them that they don't have homework, we keep up on that. And we have lots of different enrichment activities. We have STEM activities, literacy, Battle of the Books, the Sky's Learning, and now that we've had the Arts Attack, and we're starting to bring in some of the TEAL work that we're recently being brought into the district. So fortunately, my role as one of the TEAL coaches allows me to do that as well. Increasing student connections through engaging programming. We know that we have to engage the students for them to keep coming into the program. It's voluntary. So our whole goal is to get them into the program and to have them have a great experience whether it's 6:30 in the morning or till 6:00 at night. So we have lots of different things. We do clubs, there's a variety of clubs that happen at all the six sites. We have a crocheting club, a chop club, cooking, video, sports, nutrition, just a variety of things that our quality staff really is the implementation of. It's the extension of their skills that they bring to the program. We've done physical activity projects, Walk Across America, where they walked for, in theory, they walked across the nation, the equivalent mileage that it took to walk across the nation. We had a jump rope contest that we did called Jump on It. We've done community involvement, blood drives, Fodil Unity Center donations, and we do teacher appreciation, so lots of different ways that our parents and students engage with the school. Some of the feedback that we've gotten from our variety of surveys, 85% of the students enjoy being in the program. 80% of the students believe that they're better overall because of the program. These two pictures here are from our Lights On After School activities. What was very interesting is to see 300 kids or so pile into the Wild Rose Cafeteria to do the Nene Dance, which is not something that I would show you, but they were great at it. And then, of course, with the obstacle course led by the, by the middle school students. So that was a neat thing to watch. And again, some of the parent survey comments, from a Santa Fe parent, I love the program, they've helped my son get organized. He's grown so much in his first year of middle school. A Plymouth parent, the program's very good, and the Village staff is awesome. I feel like my kids are safe at Village, which touches back to the, to the, to the focus that we have for this year of safe and supportive environment. And the Village program is very supportive, and the staff is genuinely concerned about the kids. And of course, they have good parties over at Monroe, which is always helpful. So we are committed to do a couple of different things, desire to learn, obviously, increase the academic potential of the students, increase vocational interests and talents, social, civic, and cultural understanding, and develop that sense of self-worth. So there's a lot of things that go on with Village. I'm excited to be a part of it, the kids are excited, and most of all, we're here for them, so that's what, all we can ask for. Questions?
Any questions?
Okay, I'm just tired listening to all of the stuff you do.
Yes, I know, me too.
It, I'm just, I am curious, what, I imagine, the high school doesn't have the Village program, what are the other two campuses that don't?
So high school would operate on a different grant.
Right, that's different.
And then Mayflower does not have the Village program at Mayflower.
Okay. And so there's 300, I'm sorry, what was the enrollment like across our district?
Well, there's six, we have 600 kids, roughly, in those programs before and after school amongst those six campuses.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the very comprehensive report. Appreciate it. Up next, item 7.6, and Mrs. Wu.
Good evening.
Thank you, Connie.
When the business service department is starting the next school year's budget development, the students enrollment projection and the staff projection is the first step. So the district used the three-year weight average to project our students enrollment. And as a board recall that last school year and this school year, the district still experienced declining enrollment. And this year, we declined 60 students. So as a conservative approach, we project next year will continue decline, and the rate of decline is estimated at 8A students, which is 1.5, 1% less compared with this year. So staffing projection is closely related to enrollment. We also take into consideration some other factors, just like the classes reduction required by the state from the kindergarten to grade three, as well as any program changes. So the classes reduction, based on the requirement, currently, our K23, the classes each school side around 25.5. So our requirement for next year is around 25. So this definitely, for certain school side, it will require increased staff. And on the other hand, there's a program will be implemented next year at our Clifton Middle School, which is a Spanish dual-moderation program. So as a result of that, there will be staffing switch in the two middle school campuses. And I just want to, as the people pay attention, including the audience, when we talk about the staffing, we talk about the position, we are not talking about the people, because the position can be switched, and for example, there's a possibility based on the projection, we will have one less position at Clifton. This doesn't mean that we're gonna lose the, more of the teacher, because the actual teacher, we can move along through attrition. So I just wanted me to clarify, the position with the actual staff, there's a difference between them. So talk about a high school, and our high school continue experience declining enrollment. So as a result, we projected there will be 1.8 FTE. We talk about the position again, because not, not the body of the, of the people. And we'll continue to look at the Kenya campus, there's a potential that we will have 0.8 FTE less for next school year. But again, the staffing projection is closely associated with the enrollment projection. As the board mentioned, that the May 15, the parade is promote our school. So I know that the board as a team, as well as a cabinet and the community, we always will continue to emphasize the importance of the enrollment. I still remember this, actually, our board president, Reverend Hammond, your election and your theme for the enrollment, when you tried to come to the board. So I think we will continue as a team to promote our school, but we have to tie the staffing. So if we have a surprise next year, where our projections low, we have more kids show up, then we will adjust our staffing accordingly.
Any questions?
Just one question, and that is the Plymouth enrollment shows a projected drop of two enrollees. Does that assume a full enrollment in our Mandarin program?
The Mandarin program, we, when you see the, we projected the enrollment stable as this year, the number of the students potentially enroll in the Mandarin program, but there's possibility change to increase or decrease. But it's interesting that sometime when you have less one or two kids, it is difficult to impact the FTE because, you know, there's a potential ratio between number of students and the staffing.
Okay. But we are assuming a full enrollment in both our dual immersion programs.
At this moment, yes.
Any other questions, comments?
I, I have one comment, and you touched briefly on it, Ms. Wu, and that is the marketing and promotion of what happens here in our school district. We here who are involved in it in the day-to-day and keeping, and the oversight, know what we have to offer. It's sometimes if there be people who are the benefactor of what we have to offer, don't know what we have to offer. That was the primary reason why this body joined with the city to do the marketing and promotion on Monrovia Day. The Monrovia Day theme is scholars and champions. This is to highlight to the biggest crowd that we can get to that Monrovia schools will prepare your child to be successful in the world. And these are the programs in place that we have in order to achieve that. Up to and including Mayor Pro Tem Larry Spicer's son, who is the grand marshal of, of this parade. Lawrence Spicer received an appointment to the Air Force Academy with a full, full ride with his appointment because he's an excellent athlete and an excellent student. People who attend our schools, particularly in Monrovia High School, can be prepared to go anywhere in the world, and this is a vehicle that we intend to use as we see declining enrollment. Now, declining enrollment can happen because of many reasons. One is that you could have less people moving into your community that have school-aged children. It could also be because people think that maybe they can get an education that's different someplace else. And we want to provide them with the alternative to that thinking, which is the education that you get in the Monrovia Unified School System is second to none and can be used to your success anywhere in the world. The, the fact of the matter is with eighty-eight students that we are expecting to decline, and if we have inter-district transfers that continue to even stay stabilized, it will become very, very hard for us to sustain some of the programs that we have if this were the trend that carried on into the future. So it behooves us to get out in front of this and start marketing what it is that we do well and promoting that our district, our teachers are the best in the business and that you chose wisely by moving and living here in this community.
Up next, agreement for land lease and Ms. Wu again.
Yes, thank you. The option for learning, lease piece of land at our premise campus to operate before and after school program. And I noticed that from Tom's presentation, our school district also operated before and after school program. So as a result, this lease, lease, I have a negotiated with option for learning, we have some changes. First of all, the change is we changed from five years lease to two years lease. And second, we increased the monthly lease fee for twenty dollars, twenty dollars per month. So this will be additional revenues. And the third is we deleted the clause say that the option for learning have exclusive right to operate before and after school program, which is not true because the district Village program have such program also. So as a result, I will recommend the board to approve this lease. We will adjust the lease agreement accordingly after two years.
Any questions?
I have one. Does the increase take into account repair of facilities and maintenance of facilities and the purchasing of items that may need to be replaced?
Oh, that's a good question. I have not clearly explained to the board, they have their own building. So they basically lease the piece of the land. They have their own, all the utility inside supply and, and they will supply for, they will pay for all the repairs unless there's something with the land, the land.
If, if I read this correctly, it was the land that's on, hang on, let me find it. It's, the play yard equipment is particularly what I was interested in. I'm assuming that's our equipment?
The playground, yes.
Yes. So the, the question would still stand, is the money that we collect, is it sufficient to repair, replace, and maintain the equipment that we own?
So for example, if the, we, the district found that the equipment was broken as a result of their program use, then we will talk to them, request their repair for the equipment as a result of their use. So I think we should not be part of the lease, lease just for the land itself. But I can clarify with them also.
I understand, but here it says the fee includes the use of one boy's restroom, one girl's restroom, one staff restroom, and the use of the play yard equipment. That's part of the lease because that's what it says.
Okay, I would for the clarify with them, yeah.
Okay. But I, I still like to know, is the, is the money that we collect, in, is it sufficient to, if the, if the, if the equipment becomes unusable, are we responsible for replacing it or is the leasing responsible for replacing it? And are we collecting enough money to maintain it?
So the equipment is the equipment we generally provide for our students. So in the past experience, there's, it's just wear and tear. So the lease definitely increasing the, including the wear, wear and tear for our equipment. But if there's any damage which we have not experienced, then we will definitely will talk to them, but I truly believe should be additional beyond the lease.
So the normal wear and tear is covered in the, in the lease agreement, in the lease amount, but damage is covered on a case-by-case basis. It's responsibility of whoever causes the damage.
Yeah, but I would definitely give them a call to confirm that.
It, it, does anybody else use the equipment?
Yes, our own kids, it's the same playground.
Okay.
So real quick, I, I mean, maybe it'd be more useful if we really briefly went over how we arrived at the, the monthly rate versus, you know, the individual breakdown portions. So this is, this is actually just the land lease.
Yes.
So they are responsible for all of the assets on top of that particular land. So the building and anything inside of the building is their responsibility. Is that correct?
Yeah, because the building, it's a portable and it's their portable.
Right, so, so they, they have title to that.
Yes.
Now, is the amount of rent, if I remember correctly, the amount that a school district can charge for the land is, is regulated, is that correct? I mean, we have a formula that we have to go by to determine what the cost of land is, much like when we rented out a closet for a rack space. There's, there's guidelines that says how much we can charge. Is that, is that accurate?
I believe there's such guideline.
Okay, so when we come up with this monthly rent, I, I assume that we used that chart for what the land lease portion we're able to charge is?
When we decide the increase of this monthly lease is based on the historically, the, the lease actually back to nineteen eighty-nine. So based on the historical trend for the increase, so we'll, we'll continue that trend.
All right, well, I, I know the original lease was, was set up that way. And that the reason for the monthly increases was mainly because of the, the expense of running or maintaining the bathrooms because it's after hours, therefore we required an extra time from the janitor or an extra resources to restock paper supplies and, and so forth. Boy, it's, it's been a while since we did this, well, five years, obviously. But I do remember we had it broken down as to how we came up with that dollar amount. So if you can just go back and supply the board the information on, because like I said, I, I'm fairly positive that the land, our ability to charge is regulated on what we can charge. So if we can just confirm that we're within our guidelines and that we're meeting our minimum expenses. This is once again, a, a service, you know, to the kids in the area, so it's not something that we're, we're trying to make money on, but we just don't want to lose money. So if we can just verify that, please?
Yeah.
I think that would help.
Any other further questions? May we please have a vote?
Do we need a motion? I'll make the motion.
Oh, yeah, make a motion?
Yes.
Oh, second.
Motion is second, discussion. May we please have a vote?
Board member Williams?
Yes.
Board member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board member Zuko?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board president Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Up next is item eight point three and Dr. Jackson.
Yes, the Board of Education has requested to adopt a resolution declaring May eleventh, twenty sixteen as Monrovia Unified School District Staff Appreciation Day, May eleventh, twenty sixteen as Day of the Teacher, and declaring the week of May sixteenth through the twentieth, twenty sixteen as Classified School Employee Week to express gratitude and appreciation to employees for their service to Monrovia Unified School District and the youth of the community.
Questions?
Do we know if we're having pancake breakfast again?
It is tradition.
Okay.
We're not, I'm not going.
So if we can know when that's going to happen. And I would like to say that when, I mean, it kind of changes its picture once you get to the older grades, but Elementary School Staff Appreciation Week was always one of the most crazy, colorful, rewarding times of the year because it was nice to be able to kind of just shower the staff with how much they're appreciated. So I'm glad that still continues. I get, I see every once in a while doors rapped and luncheons being brought in. And I would just like to remind people that just because your kids aren't cute and little in elementary school, that high school teachers may also appreciate that every once in a while. So if you take them a Starbucks gift card, they're, you know, doing a great job and, they have high school kids with them.
Motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. May we please have a vote?
Board member Zuko?
Yes.
Board member Williams?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board president Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Up next, item eight point five, Dr. Jackson.
The Board of Education has requested to approve two calendars at this board meeting, the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year calendar. The Monrovia Teachers Association, California School Employees Association, and the district agreed to these proposed calendars. It is now being presented to the board for approval.
Any questions?
Justin, I really appreciate it being a two-year and getting on that cycle, I think will really help parents and families plan for vacations and time away, and I really appreciate the work to get this two-year done. Thank you.
The same. I appreciate everybody's work in order to do this. I know it's going to make a big, big difference to our families.
Dr. Jackson, could you just for the public, give us the dates that school starts both years and the last day of school those years? Every year we have people say, oh, I didn't know school was starting so early. And so we need to start getting that word out there. It starts on August?
Seventeenth.
August seventeenth?
This year?
Twenty sixteen and concludes June eighth. And similarly, in the following year, the school year will start on August sixteenth and conclude on June sixth.
So people can schedule their vacations around that so we don't lose ADA because...
Well, it's never too early to shop that June the eighth, last day of school is my birthday, so if anybody, you know, put it out there early.
We can have a double celebration in the school on Rob's birthday. I'll make the motion that way.
Okay.
So move, second.
Motion is second, discussion. May we please have a vote?
Board member Williams?
Yes.
Board member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board member Zuko?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board president Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
I'm going to skip over nine point two.
You're beyond eight point eight.
I know, I'm skipping, I'm, I'm just warning you in advance.
My husband did ask, he was like, what if they don't accept you?
Don't do it. Eight point eight. And Dr. Jackson?
Yes, the Board of Education has requested to receive the Staff Analysis Position Control Report, and this coincides and is supported by the agenda item seven point six, the enrollment and staffing projections. So I'm not going to reiterate with what Connie Wu previously indicated, but to just simply say, in the classified staffing realm, there are no changes and that is reflected in the report. And on the certificated side, as Connie Wu indicated, there is an overall net decrease in staffing, teacher staffing by one point six. And again, not meaning laying any teacher off. We deliver no reduction in force notices this year. It just means we could possibly be reallocating staffing within the district.
Thank you.
Nine point two.
Okay, nine point two. I guess I am going to turn this over to Alex Zuko.
Oh, I lead my own motion?
Well, you don't get to make a motion on it, but you're the reason why we're here.
So I've been very fortunate to have served here and have accepted a job that seems to be a bit of a perfect fit, but it is four hundred and fifty miles away, which is not so perfect. So I will be working for the California State PTA as a policy consultant handling LCAP and the arts. And then moving into government relations for the PTA. Since it is a bit of a sleeping giant, I don't think people know what to do with all those members. If they actually did stuff, man, it'd be a pretty, pretty powerful group. So that's my goal. And Joe and I will be moving to Sacramento. We're actually finding a place to live next week because we still don't know where we're going to live, but I start June first. And our daughters are pretty excited for now, I guess. They haven't been to Sacramento, so.
That'll change.
So that'll be exciting. So I would appreciate your support in this motion.
Any discussion? I will entertain a motion.
I, I move that we go ahead and let Alex lead with our blessing instead of telling her how we really feel about it, but yeah, I make that motion.
Come on, Brian. Second it.
With regret, I will, I will second this.
There's a motion to second any discussion. May we please have a vote?
Board member Williams?
No. Yes.
Board member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board member Zuko?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board president Hammond?
You know, Alex, I was going to do the symbolic one for you. No.
I would expect nothing less.
That is the symbolic one.
Motion carries four one.
Thank you very much. You know, I could actually see, I can see women cry and children cry. That doesn't bother me. I'm just telling you, I see men cry and it's just all over, so I need you all to put your big boy pants on and nobody cries because unacceptable.
This is not a good day for us. Item nine point three is options for filling the newly announced vacancy. There are a number of things that we can do. All of them must be done in public, and so for the audience and the folks at home, give me just a couple of minutes and I'll read what the options are. There is a filling of a vacancy, now that it has been approved and accepted by the board. A board member has resigned effective on May the twentieth. We have sixty days after that day in order to come to a decision on what to do with filling that vacancy. Since the closest election is more than four months out, we are required to do something to fill that seat as doing nothing is not an option. If we were to exercise that option, the county superintendent would then order an election and it would be filled. So that is something that we're not going to let happen. We will control our own destiny. We could hold a special election, and that special election, the entire cost, and we'd be fully burdened by the, the district. At this moment, I was going to ask a question. Do we have any idea what it would cost to have and hold a special election?
I need to do some research and then let your board know.
Is it, can, do you have off the top of your head about what it costs to just do an election?
One hundred fifty thousand dollars last time. That was the estimate cost for last time we did.
So a cost to hold a duly noticed, in its natural election cycle, election cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay?
My discussions, Rob, uh, we were told that they, the county, uh, recorder's office said that we would have an answer within ten days of, I believe it was Monday of this week, that they would give us an answer on what the cost would be.
Okay.
For sure, but I think, you know, the hundred and fifty thousand is the base level and it's probably, since it's a special election, their number is gonna be above that.
So, right, and so that is an option that the board has, is to go in that direction. The other option that the board has, um, is basically it's a policy that this board has created because it does not look as if there's anything in code and the education code that says how to fill one. And so we're gonna rely on Monrovia UNSD Board Policy nine two two three, which lists two ways which the, uh, to fill an appointment. One is to advertise and solicit candidate applications or nominations, ensure that the applicants are eligible for board membership, announce the candidates at a public meeting, accept oral or written public input, and select a provisional appointee by a majority vote. That is one. The second is to accept nominations for board membership at a public meeting and select a provisional appointee from among those that were there. Further, uh, within ten days of a provisional appointment, the governing board shall post notices of both the vacancy and the full name of the provisional appointee in three public places in the district and shall publish a notice pursuant to section sixty sixty-one of the government code to publish in the local newspaper if one exists. The notice shall include the date of the appointment and a statement that unless a valid petition calling for a special election is filed in the office of the county and superintendent of schools, the provisional appointment shall become an effective appointment. If a, if a provisional appointment is made, the registered voters of the district may, within thirty days of the appointment, contest the appointment and petition for a special election to fill the vacancy. Um, they, the person, uh, who fills the vacancy shall hold the office only until the next regularly scheduled election for district governing board, which would be in November of twenty seventeen. Who would be eligible? If that's the direction we would go into, the, who would be eligible is any registered voter who is a resident of the school district and who is not disqualified by constitution or laws of the state for holding a civil office, is eligible to be elected or appointed without further qualifications. An employee of the school district may not be sworn into office until said employee resigns that employment. So if somebody who was employed by MUSD thought that they would like to do this and that's the direction we would go into, they would have to resign their position. If employee does not resign, the employment shall be terminated upon being sworn into office. And those are the rules that we have in place and the options before us. And those will be discussed, um, in length, um, at our, um, upcoming meetings. But that is for the public.
And, and Rob, uh, the last time we had this situation happen, uh, those policies were checked with government code and ed code to make sure they complied with what was listed in those codes. So it, it is in our policy, but it is backed by government and ed code.
Okay, and I mean, we, we have utilized, um, the appointment process two times in my memory. I, I think, uh, shoot, uh, God, he has a great voice. I can't think of his name right now, who, um?
Bruce Carter.
Bruce Carter.
Appointed us.
Bruce Carter, who was a long-serving board member, was, um, uh, appointed to the board when a board member, I think it was, uh, Betty Sanford. No, wasn't Betty Sanford.
No, I was appointed when Betty Sanford resigned.
Okay, so, oh, it's when, was it?
It went Claire left. Bruce was appointed until the next election.
Do you notice that all the women are leaving? Claire left, Betty left, I'm just saying that, yeah.
Are you saying you're leaving because of the guys on the panel?
They can't appreciate your fabulousness like I.
So, well, I'm, I was getting to is there's precedent that's on the board that, um, we had, the board at the time has appointed a person to fill this position.
President Hammond, do we, do we have a schedule for when the actual discussions of and, and decision is gonna be made?
It's, um, the way I understand it, by reading this and asking the questions that I asked, it would probably be starting in June, I would think, that we would start that process. We, Alex, you're here for the meeting that's in May, correct?
May eleventh.
May eleventh.
And then the?
And then your resignation is on the twentieth of May.
Yeah, I am here also the May seventeenth for the Classified Employee of the Year.
Okay, so your resignation is, and in, by rules, you still get to do everything as an elected board member until the day of your resignation.
Except, except.
Except have a vote on who replaces you.
But we can start the process now, as, now that we've accepted her resignation. We as a board can start the process.
You know, I'm moving. I am, I am not opposed to getting in front of this and so directing, uh, Dr. Terrosian to, uh, start the process.
All right, I'm, I'm all for it. I, you know, we're gonna have to have the discussion in public about how we wanna fill this.
So maybe for our next board meeting?
You know, I'll tell you my leanings and that is not to spend a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand dollars for a special election when we're gonna elect this position in less than eighteen months from.
I, I, I don't disagree with that at all.
So if, if we in fact are going to, you know, seek nominations or applica- or volunteers to step up, uh, would seem that starting that process sooner would be, uh, better than waiting until Alex is gone.
So if I remember correctly, what we did last time, or the last two times at least that I went through it, uh, we publicly, we, we made it publicly known. So we put, uh, an advertisement or a notice, um, in the Star News, uh, I can't remember, I think it was for thirty days, asking any persons who have interests to put in an application to the superintendent's office. Superintendent then collected all of the, uh, various people who wanted, uh, the position. The board then interviewed each of those candidates in a similar manner than which we interview, uh, staff members.
And this will all be in public? It's not, it's not personnel, so it's?
The interviews, you know, I, I think that the interviews are, are not, are not open to the public. I mean, they're interview, I, I could be mistaken. I don't remember the interviews being open and clearly the discussion. Oh, boy, you know, I do not.
I think there's a provision, Brian, for the interview to be closed because the following applicants would benefit by hearing the questions
Yes.
to the first applicant. So to eliminate that, I, I believe, but this has to be checked, that the actual interview is closed.
So what's instructed, what's instructed, Dr. Terrosian, to bring to us at our next board meeting, uh, the process that is acceptable by all the rules so that we can start looking for, um, the proper person to fill a vacancy?
I think what we can do now, because I think everybody is on the same page, is to, um, uh, give direction that we do not want to hold a special election unless there's a person who wants to have that. Uh, so we can take that off the table and reduce the amount of, uh, research that they need to do. Uh, and if we're in agreement of our general procedure of advertise for thirty days and then we'll get the, the technical, um, description of how that process will look after that, uh, then we can go down that path. Because then we can start setting up some timelines that I think will be a little bit easier to manage.
That's a good idea.
I'm good with the direction that we don't want to go that way, but I think probably on the next board meeting, uh, we may need to have a motion that says this is the way we're gonna fill this position. And.
That's fine, as far, as far as direction goes for, so she, so staff is not spinning their wheels. If they have an idea of what we're looking to do, uh, then they can bring us the recommendation and then we can take action the next board meeting with it clearly outlined.
But, but I think they do need to go ahead and get the answer from the county what the actual cost would be, so we're, we're no.
Yeah, we need to, we need to be, have empirical data that says this is what it is. And we go, no, we don't wanna do that.
Exactly.
But other than that, I, I know hopefully that at the next board meeting we can make the decision, this is how we're gonna fill it and get the process started.
Do you understand what we're looking for? Make that communication with, uh, Dr. Terrosian? Any questions of us and our desires? We're good? Okay. Nine point four oh is the pending board issues. There's, um, the list. Does anybody have any questions about the list? Okay. The list. Um, next up is a resolution for remembrance of Armenian genocide demands in humanity demand. What I would like to do, um, especially since Ms. Yule was here earlier talking about the inclusiveness and why we do do this resolution, I believe I would like to take just a second and read what it says. Whereas world history chronicles events during which mankind committed unspeakable horrors upon their fellow man. And whereas the history, social science framework for California Public Schools requires the study of genocide. And whereas the Armenian genocide, the Holocaust, the Rwanda genocide, and the atrocities perpetuated by ISIL against religious and ethnic minorities in Iraq and Syria are only four examples from recent history that depict the atrocities committed by man. And whereas April twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen marks the one hundred and first commemoration of the Armenian genocide. And whereas despite these atrocities, there are those who survived and who today teach tolerance and understanding to prevent the darkest chapters of human history from recurring. Now therefore be it resolved that in the spirit of remembrance, the governing board of Monrovia Unified School just confirms its commitment to teaching of tolerance, understanding, and the appreciation of diversity in our schools and community adopted the twentieth day of April, two thousand and sixteen.
Do we have to have a motion to, is that an action?
I don't have an action here, but.
We will need a motion, yeah.
Well, let's do that, now that I've read that, we have a motion.
I, I, I would just like to say, while we're considering it, this came up a few years ago. Do we wanna recognize the Armenian, uh, Holocaust? And as a board and as a district, we discussed this and said it's more than just that. Yes, this is the, uh, this is the good day and the day to recognize man's inhumanity to man. And while we recognize it on the day that we remember the Armenian situation, we also put in this resolution, uh, resolution, the Holocaust, uh, Cambodia, those other places that man's inhumanity to man has expressed itself. And as, uh, Joni Yule said tonight, this community believes in inclusiveness, living together, sharing together, being one humanity and, and not separate divisive, uh, factions. And so as a board and as a community, I believe this, if anything, talks to what Monrovia is, this resolution talks to what it is. We wanna be inclusive, uh, be one humanity, not, not separate factions. And while we celebrate it on the day that remembers Armenian, uh, genocide, it's a celebration of the unity of mankind and the remembrance of what man can do to man in all these situations. So, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion or the second or whatever, wherever we're at on that.
Is there any more discussion? May we please have a vote?
Board member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board member Williams?
Yes.
Board member Zuko?
Yes.
Board president Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next, we have a number of dates to remember. Um, we have, uh, the mixer here tomorrow night in the, the boardroom, uh, where we're gonna be celebrating a lot of the activities and programs that we talked about earlier and to the business community so that they, when they leave here, they are not only the champions, but they are the ambassadors for the Monrovia Unified School District. On May the tenth, we have another LCAP meeting. Uh, May thirteen, fourteen, um, is all of the Monrovia Day weekend. May the fourteenth is the parade at nine AM. Following the parade are all the activities are gonna be in the park, uh, where the, it's the promotion and the celebration of our community and the promotion and celebration of our schools. And then on June the eighth, there'll be an LCAP public review, um, hearing. The, um, open houses are going to be at, um, Brad Oaks on May the third and at Santa Fe on the nineteenth. As we heard Dave Hart talk about, there is a great music program happening this Monday coming up. Um, and we will have our next board meeting, um, here in this chamber on May the eleventh, um, at seven PM. And if there is no more business before this body, we will be adjourned at nine fifteen. 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 Fifteen.